Good evening. Welcome to the school committee meeting of October fifteenth, two thousand and twelve. This evening, our agenda consists of our annual review of MCAS results. Additionally, we have a resident that requests to speak to the board as to some of the board's policies. And with that being said, I guess we have a request from our student representative, Mr. Zach Trombley. I guess Mr. Wells, he has a lot of homework tonight and a couple of tests tomorrow, so he's requesting you'll first. So if everyone just bear with us and Zach will skip ahead. Go ahead, Zach.
All right. Well, thank you, Dan.
Mr. Coonan.
Oh, Mr. Coonan. Thank you, Mr. Coonan. Sorry about that. Okay, to start off, the National Honor Society lately has been helping out with the Operation Graduation. And on Saturday and Sunday this week, they were helping with the Little League to raise money. The Student Council has been working with the Special Olympics lately to raise money for their trick or trot. And all of the proceeds will go to raise funds for research with the developmentally disabled. And we're having a Halloween event on the twenty-sixth. This week, the Student Council is having the O-Factor, which is a two-night Halloween event. And it's kind of a new way to do it because we're having a text-to-vote, and the audience is texting. And we're going to see the polls on a projector in the auditorium, so that's kind of exciting. And the lady to the left, or right, is, well, your left, is a judge, Mrs. Brenda Ennis. And one more thing, the cross-country had their last home meet last Wednesday, and this Wednesday at three is going to be their last meet in Uxbridge. That's all. Very good. Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Nice job, Zach.
Okay. You're excused, if you like.
Go study.
Our next order of business will be the, we have minutes from September the twenty-fourth, and it appears that members present, Mrs. Raveli, Mrs. Ennis, and myself, entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? Just a quick point, I think Mr. Kennedy, I think Mrs. Ennis and Mrs. Raveli have helped, and I think that these meeting, that these meeting minutes are a true accurate rendition of what went on at, what went on in our meeting, and I'm very happy with the result. Thank you for the hard work in that, in learning the system. Anything else? Call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Three in affirmative and one abstention. And we'll jump to our new business this evening, is the analysis and review of the MCAS results. And our handle list this evening is, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Tenenberger will lead us off, and then we will jump in at various spots. I believe you have a presentation, sir?
Yes, sir.
And then after that, committee members will be able to ask some questions.
Certainly.
Hopefully hold questions till we get through this, to try and bring some order to it. And then our administrators are here, and we show we all some questions for them. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Coonan, and welcome to all the folks at home, and certainly appreciate having all of our, all of our administrators here today to discuss the MCAS results from the spring of two thousand and twelve. I just wanted to take a minute to fill in everyone on all that has been going on in our district. We started many initiatives last year, and we are continuing them and also ramping up some new ones. Underscoring the importance of the change that we are doing is the basic fact that our students don't get another chance. And we must improve at a pace that ensures that all of our students are ready for the challenges that they will surely face upon graduation. Number one, we are providing more professional development to our staff with the addition of department heads and lead teachers, along with the teachers working with our students for an hour of week after school to give us much-needed time that we did not have in the past to improve our teaching and learning. Many thanks to the OEA for their collaboration on many fronts, the two days of full professional development this year, additional contractual time to help our students, and meetings with departments and cohorts, all with the common goal to deliver the best education we possibly can. We are also working closely with our DSAC team, and Mrs. Daly has done an outstanding job of starting to get our curriculum aligned and mapped with Common Core and the mass frameworks. This will allow our teachers to evaluate what they teach and how they teach, and align our curriculum both horizontally as well as vertically across schools and grades. We have identified our literacy as a key component, especially in our pre-K to four grades, which we identified last year through our MAP testing assessments, that we, we did have students, as soon as they got to us at age four or five, already behind. So we have identified that as a major goal, and we have hired teacher assistants and specialists to work with our students that are furthest behind, to help them catch up and catch them up as quickly as possible. And I look forward to reporting to the committee our mid-year MAP scores, because I think that that will be very revealing as to the hard work that we have been doing. As folks may remember, last year, we started to roll out the John Collins Integrated Writing Program across the curriculum. It was something that we felt was, was lacking, a cohesive roadmap for our students to be fluent as they write. And so we have ramped up in year two, John Collins, to all grades, all classes, and our recent Professional Development Day on October fifth, that was a large part of what many of our teachers took part in. So we expect that the Collins Writing Program will continue to strengthen our students' writing. We are in the process of training with the, with the great inspiration and leadership from Mr. Trahan. We're training all of our teachers on the data warehouse so that we can access the data that they need to improve their practice and identify levels of student competency so that we can better match our teaching and learning. The DSAC team, the District and School Assistance Center team, is training staff in the use of learning walks, and these are, help to identify common areas within a building. And teachers have embraced this concept as a strategy to identify issues and not names to better deliver on our promise of improving education. A couple of years ago, we started a full-day kindergarten program, and we felt strongly that all of our students would benefit. And Mr. Yvonne shared with me the first MAP testing for second graders, and we had an outstanding proficiency rate. And this is the first group of students that have benefited from full-day kindergarten. And so it was gratifying to see them, really for the first testing in September, to be that many of the students at a proficient or better level. So I believe that that will continue to pay dividends for the district. The educator evaluation system, which is in the process of being implemented over last year, this year, and next year across the state as part of Race to the Top, is proving to be a lot of work, and I think maybe more work than the folks that drafted that regulation, those regulations thought in the beginning. We are very fortunate that we have had extreme cooperation with the OEA, with our teachers' union, and collaboration, which allowed Oxford to be one of the earliest districts to negotiate that language into collective bargaining. This educator evaluation system, which I can't wait to unveil to the committee at the next meeting what the superintendency evaluation entails, but it is for all professional staff, teachers, directors, administrators, superintendents, to improve our practice and thereby improve our students' outcomes. We are also working with the instructional leadership teams, which are made up of a network of districts in central Massachusetts, and those meetings are once a month where we are able to share best practices and also what hasn't worked, so that we can further enrich what we are doing to make sure that we are on the right track and using the best of what other folks are doing. The administration at Oxford High School has greatly improved the academic climate by the changes that they made over the summer, and it really has allowed our students to flourish in a true learning environment. And I think that that is a universal acclamation from all that have witnessed. And again, you will hear more about that at the next meeting on the twenty-ninth, because we are having the school improvement plan starting to have an update beginning at that meeting. We've also increased the use of our MAP testing, which is, which is computer-based testing that corresponds to the MCAS. And we do it three times a year, in September, in January, and May, and it allows our teachers instant feedback as to how their students are doing and what they know and what they need to work on. And we have rolled this out to kindergarten and all of grade one this year. And so we are now using our MAP testing in K through eight. This common assessment is certainly something that the educator evaluations point to, it is something that Race to the Top demands, and so we really have been able to, to meet that standard, again with the help of Mr. Trahan and all of the administrators to roll this out, because it is a lot of work to logistically plan for it and to access technology so all of our students can, can participate. So with the help of our DSAC assistance, Race to the Top, the collaboration with the OEA, we are breaking new ground. We are moving away from old paradigms, and we are working together, truly working in a collaborative way to improve our practice and therefore our student outcomes. The other note that I did want to make before I start analyzing the reports is that, as some folks know, our demographics have changed. I think one main factor certainly has been the economy, but we are facing a much more transient student population here in Oxford, and we have upwards of ten percent of our total student population registering one year and also withdrawing. So our total number stays the same of students that we educate, but the population has become much more challenging. And with the demographics come a large majority of the new families that are headed by a single parent, that are low-income and more likely to be on IEPs. And these students require more work and more money and more resources to make sure that we reach them. And I think that that is important. It doesn't excuse, it doesn't provide rationale, it is merely the facts that, that is what we deal with each and every day. What I'd like to do is, with Mr. Trahan's help, and certainly the committee has the hard copies of these reports, is I'd like to go through our MCAS results, and as, as folks saw, there's a couple of different ways that, that the data now lines up and is reported. You know, we have our, our MCAS scores that are taken, the raw scores are then converted into a more manageable scoring system, but we also have now, in our third year, I believe, the student growth percentiles. And this is another prism by which we can look at our scores and our achievement and our growth. And this becomes not a standalone, but certainly in conjunction with the MCAS scores themselves, gives us another way to look at the areas that we are strong in and the areas that need improvement. So I'd like to begin with the, the first set of reports, and as you can see here, that would be the Spring two thousand and twelve District and State Comparison in ELA for all students. And on the left, there is a box there that shows the district comparing to the state in all of those, advanced, proficient, needs improvement, and warning failing. And obviously, our goal is to have as many students as possible, as close to one hundred percent as possible, proficient. And as you can see, it also does a bar graph. The blue is the advanced, the lighter blue proficient, the pink is needs improvement, and the warning to the right is in red. And so as you can see, all students taking ELA, we were short of the state average in advanced, we were ahead of the state average in proficient, and very similar in needs improvement and warning failure. We use the state average because it is a benchmark. It is certainly not what we aspire to and to be, but it is certainly one way to look at the data to see how we are doing. Next is the District State Comparison in Math. Again, this is for all students. And again, you can see the numbers, while similar, again, are not satisfactory. Advanced, we are at twenty-two percent of our students taking math, as compared with the state average of twenty-seven. We had thirty-four percent of our students proficient versus the state average of thirty-two, and our needs improvement was slightly higher, thirty-one percent versus twenty-six percent. And our warning failing was unfortunately almost the same. And this is a large slice of all the students that take, that took the test. The third test now that is given is Science and Technology slash Engineering, and as you can see here, we are not as advanced as we need to be, even though we are making inroads, we need to reach out and do a better job. Again, ten percent or forty-five percent combined is proficient or better compared with fifty-four percent at the state average. And I guess I can't stress it enough throughout this presentation, that while these are merely numbers on a page, they represent our students, and it is imperative that we can reach out to home, to meet with school, and to make sure that we have an, an open dialogue about what we can do together, because we only have these students for six or seven hours a day, and they are other places for seventeen or eighteen hours. And it is very critical that all families, that all students, that all in the community work together. Those were the district-wide summaries of all students compared to the state. Next, you can see the Clara Barton School. MCAS begins at grade three, so hence why we do more MAP testing now in K one and two, to give us the data that we need. But our students begin the MCAS journey in third grade. And as you can see here, the, the results are better in grade three. We are starting to move the needle. Again, for ELA in grade three, combined with advanced and proficient, you have sixty-five percent versus fifty-eight percent the year before. So that is a significant increase. We are on the right path, and we are doing much better in reaching our third graders as they begin their MCAS journey. You see the same, similar trend when you look at grade three in math last year. I mean, this is, this is shining. This is spectacular. Thirty-two percent of our third graders were advanced in their math MCAS. And I know that the administration at the middle school and the high school is watching those carefully, because as they go through, we hope they continue to improve. But that is hats off to Mr. Barone and the faculty and staff at the Clara Barton School. So combined, sixty-three percent of our third graders were proficient or better in math. Again, that's compared with fifty-two percent last year. So again, the numbers are moving in the right direction, but we know that we are not satisfied. We know that we have work to do. Grade four in ELA, the proficient or better, the two blue bars, shows fifty-one percent compared with the year before at thirty-eight percent. So again, I firmly believe that we are on the right path, and I think that the, the literacy initiatives will pay huge dividends. I think that John Collins will pay and continue to pay dividends. I believe that full-day kindergarten will also continue to help us move in the right Again, as you compare these numbers to the state, while our advanced is not comparable to the state, our proficient is, and we make up the difference obviously on the needs Grade four in math, once again, we see a marked improvement over the previous years. And I don't mean to compare us only to last year. We show four years here, and, and growth has been flat until this year. And you can see that fifty-two percent compared to a year ago where it was thirty-five percent. The year before that, it was thirty-two percent. The year before that, it was forty-one percent. So I think that, that grade three and grade four, the students are to be commended. I believe that the Clara Barton School has really put initiatives in place, and really, you can see by the numbers, and while we are, by no, and I'm going to say this probably almost as many times as I approve this message, it's political humor, but we're not happy with this. We are not satisfied. We are pleased that we're moving numbers in a positive direction, and they are not remaining stagnant, and they are not getting worse, which means that last year, really the first full year that we started to see some very strong changes, and we are only continuing to ramp this up. And certainly, with the help from the state, with the cooperation and collaboration around negotiating contracts, we have seen the ability to improve. So that is the grade three and grade four scores. And again, we also know that one of the main drivers in why No Child Left Behind and the TLA adequate yearly progress is no longer the law of the land, is because many of the scores, especially in grade eight, we're going to put the whole state in warning or needs improvement, the state that has consistently performed better than every other state on national tests. So how can that be that we're not making adequate yearly progress, and yet Massachusetts is by far leading all of the states in, in many different assessments? So the bottom line is that adequate yearly progress is no longer, and we now get out from under that. All schools are bad, all schools need to be punished, all schools are not making the grade. Nothing could be further from the truth. As you can see here, as we look at the middle school, and this would be last year's grade five, six, seven, and eight, we look at grade five in ELA, and as you can see there, it did dip from the previous year, and we are not happy because we did not perform at the state level. And, you know, I think forty-seven percent down from sixty-three percent, down from sixty-three percent, down from sixty-five percent. Nobody would say that that is acceptable. But I also know how hard Mrs. Hackett and Mr. Milliner have worked with all of the faculty at the middle school, and we can certainly discuss a lot of the gains and the good things that are going on there. Again, this is the slice that we have to live by. This is what we have to aspire to, but it is one, it's one picture. Grade five in math, again, you can see that this particular gray level struggled with forty-two percent compared to the state at fifty-seven percent. And rest assured that we are all working diligently to improve. And I think that this is not about targeting or singling out anyone, but we know where we need to make the improvements, and we are continuing to make them. In grade five, Science and Technology, we have a similar trend there where we are at thirty-nine percent proficient or better compared to fifty-two percent at the state. So, and that's in light of the fact that we just started a STEM program, we just added more programming in math, so we, we have work to do. It will be interesting to see how this group performs as sixth graders this spring, because that will be a good barometer as to how the changes that we are making are having an impact. Grade six, as you can see there in ELA, we have a large percentage that are proficient, much larger than the state. However, we don't have as many advanced, a combined sixty-eight percent, and the state is at sixty-six percent. So again, we all know that by the time our students take these tests in grade ten, they all find the wherewithal to do very well, because it is a graduation requirement. But there are, along the way, dips that, that keep us up at night, working to find ways to improve. And I think certainly, communication between home and school is one, one way that we can do that. In grade six in math, again, we're at sixty-two percent, which is slightly ahead of the state, at sixty percent in proficient and advanced. But again, it's a challenge this past spring to tweak it, to know it needs to be improved, and to get the, the commu, the, the school community to buy in to what is necessary to make this work. And we are doing, believe me, we are doing everything we can to move these numbers in the right direction. And there is work to be done, and we are not satisfied. However, we also feel that we are moving in the right direction. In grade seven, again, you'll see that the proficient and advanced does outperform the state with seventy-eight percent versus seventy-one percent. So at grade seven, the numbers do start to look better, and I think that, that maturity of being in, in middle school is starting to improve. Grade seven in math, we're at fifty-one percent, which is exactly the state average in proficient Grade eight, which is the last grade that they take MCAS at the middle school, you can see that we, our ELA scores were eighty-two percent between proficient and advanced compared to the state at eighty-one percent. compared to the state at eighty-one percent. Grade eight math, again, I think it is worthy to note that twenty-three percent of our students performed at an advanced level in grade eight. And combined, we're at fifty-six percent versus the state at fifty-two percent. And the fact that these numbers need to drive the accountability, we can debate. The bottom line is these are the benchmark that we need to perform at. They haven't gone away. The level of assessment and accountability is only gonna continue to be more challenging. And so we need to make sure that the students that require the help, we enlist the home to support that and to work together in partnership to make sure that our students get the best that we have. Grade eight, science and technology, I think, you know, while the forty-one percent proficient is good, we would love to have a few more folks advanced. Science and technology, especially in grade eight, is one of Raytheon's huge initiatives. They are looking at really stepping up to attract eighth graders and getting eighth graders to really love math and science and technology. And if they figure if they can target folks in middle school, then those folks will continue to embrace and perform well and learn to like those subjects as many of our careers are in this area now. But again, forty-four percent proficient versus the state's forty-three percent is not what we aspire to and it is not what we are happy with. At the high school, in grade ten, our ELA scores were eighty-seven percent of our students last spring proficient. And again, as we all know, students have several opportunities to retake their MCAS throughout their high school years so that they can pass these to be able to earn their The eighty-seven percent was a nice increase over the prior year. And again, while it represents movement in the right direction, we have more to do to get our students to perform at the appropriate levels. Our grade ten math, sixty-seven percent proficient or advanced, which was less than the state average. So we know that we have work to do. With department heads, with the changes that we have made, I believe that we will see, and the fact that we now are engaging our curriculum across K through twelve, I believe that we will have the necessary plans in place. And the disappointment is that it takes long to do this. The amount of work behind the scenes here is not instantaneous. It's not simple and it's not easy, but it's good work. And it's work that is worthy of our efforts. Again, the last in grade ten, the science and technology, we were at fifty-four percent, the state average, sixty-nine percent. So again, we need to instill that love of engineering and all things technology in our students. And again, I wanna point out that by the time the students are in grade twelve, and I'm sure Mr. Nugent can back me up on this, just about all, if not all, of our students do pass their MCAS. Some, it takes a little longer, but we do get them to eventually pass. The next group of reporting is a little challenging to follow. If you're not used to it, I will give it my best shot to make it clear and understandable. I'm sure that Mr. Trahan will jump in if I misspeak. What this does is you can see along the bottom axis, there's your median student growth percentiles. And then you have your scores going up, your percentage of achievement. So what it does is it really divides the grid, divides the axis into four areas. Obviously, if you are close to the zero and zero, you're in low growth, low achievement. And obviously, if you go higher in that initial area, you're still in low growth, but you have higher achievement. Obviously, the place we'd all like to be is in that upper right quadrant, which is higher growth, higher achievement. The reason why this report is sometimes misleading is if you were already achieving at a high rate, you're not going to see growth if the large majority of your students is already at proficient or better, then in the year following, you wouldn't see the growth. You wouldn't see high growth. You would see somewhat less growth. But certainly, for our reporting purposes, it's very illustrative in that you can see the X marking the spot is the state average. The largest circle is all of our students, and then we have been able to split it out by grade. And what the reporting does, and this requires a tremendous amount of computation in the back, because it takes every student who took, for instance, eighth grade ELA, and it breaks down all of the scores. So for every student across the state that, let's say, scores at two-twenty, our students would then be mapped to all of the rest of the students that had the same score. And that allows us to determine our growth. So we're not comparing apples to oranges, but every student's score is compared with students with the exact same score that took that same test in the same grade. So it's another way to measure. It's not a standalone by any stretch because you really need to have both reports together along with other forms of common assessment. But the growth certainly for specific buildings, for specific grades, tells another layer of the story. And as you can see here, grade five, no surprise, based upon the raw numbers that we looked at, has the lowest growth, lowest achievement. Grade six has the highest growth because it's furthest to the right. Grade ten, no surprise again, has the highest achievement. So another way to think of the growth is the state mathematically calculates it into five different sections by twenty percents. And so, and they do a terrific color scheme that is very difficult to sort out. But again, on a growth report, on a growth chart, you want to see year to year, all of the bubbles moving to the right in the upper right quadrant. You can still have high growth and still have low achievement. But what that tells you is what you're doing year to year is starting to pay dividends. But if you have low growth and low achievement, then you really have an awful lot of work, a large mountain to climb. This is all students, obviously ELA, broken down by grade. On the next report, we pulled out low income status. And the headline every year in every paper when the MCAS scores come out is the low income is the toughest segment of students to get to higher achievement. And around the state, the experts scratch their head as to why this is, what's behind it, and how can we move those students along? As you can see here, when we pull out all students, we have the yellow being the entire district and the small green dot, obviously slower growth, lower achievement. And that represents all of our low income. And as we all know, when this building opened in two thousand and two, our low income population in the town of Oxford was about eleven percent. And now we are over thirty-three percent. So we are over a third of our students who qualify for low income services. And as you can see here, we continue to need to redouble our efforts in order to get those students to achieve. Again, on the very next page, we looked at our students in special education. And again, it's very telling that a big subgroup of our total students did not have good growth and did not have good achievement. When you look at mathematics by grade, again, you can see that the large green circle, light, light green circle is all students, the smaller with the numbers next to them represent the individual grades. And grade three is not here because there would be no growth to compare it to. So it starts at grade four. And again, no surprise, seeing what we went through with the raw numbers, our grade four had the highest growth. Grade five, lower achievement, lower growth. And again, our grade ten here in math, while the achievement was higher, is not high enough and the growth was not where you would want it to be in that upper right quadrant on the And again, we look at math with low income and we see it is directly below in terms of growth, the achievement is less. And again, our students, our special education students, really, we need and we are thrilled that we have Patricia Susan as our new director of student services because this is obviously an area that we as a district need to work on. Where that segment, that subgroup, has very low achievement and lower growth. The last couple of reports that show a cohort performance, I think, are very telling, again, because it shows growth over time. The first one, which has a yellow arrow at the top that says the students that are included are the students that took all of their tests in Oxford. So as you can see, here, our grade ten students who took, who started out their career, it looks like, with all of their MCAS scores, when they got to grade ten, they were very, very strong. To the point that ninety-five percent of our students that we have worked with throughout their academic careers scored proficient or better. And that's a tribute to our administrators, it's a tribute to our teachers, it's a tribute to the community and the families that support these students. But it is very revealing that ninety-five percent are proficient or better. Now again, when we add all students who took any test, and this is a slice for students at each grade level, but it's every student that takes the test, we're at eighty-five percent in grade ten. So we know that, yes, we are proof. It is difficult to improve student scores if they are not with us and attending over time. And that is not unique to Oxford. That is statewide. And when we have students who leave us after less than a year, after registering with us, and when we have students who come into us in January and it's their third or fourth school district of the year, you can imagine that for students that we educate, those are pretty challenging years. And I think that, you know, again, it's a fact. And it's something that we still need to work on and it's something that we have to redouble our efforts to improve, but that's a fact. And the amount of work that it takes to register and intake students and then to have them withdraw, you know, without the benefit of all of their time with us, makes it a challenge. And these last two reports show that very clearly. So again, this first one is ELA and the second one is math. I wanted to make sure, right, again, who took the test in district with ELA, you saw that at ninety-five percent. And again, comparing it to everybody who took the test at eighty-five percent. In math, the folks that took it all the way through, ninety-three percent. Ninety-two and a half, if you believe how they round. But ninety-three percent of our students that were with us did very well in grade ten. And again, all students, and that's what public education is all about. It's all students. We take everybody and we nurture all of students, all students. We don't have the luxury of sending students back to some other educational scenario or situation. We take and try our best with every single student. And again, when you compare math at ninety-three percent and then everybody who takes the test is at eighty-two percent, you can see that transient segment of our demographic makes it much more difficult to get to the numbers that we all want. It doesn't make us try any less and it certainly doesn't make us find any more excuses or rationalization. It's what we do. It's what we signed up for. It's what we continue to do every hour of the hundred and eighty days that we have our students. And I cannot truly express the amount of dedication that goes into this from the folks that are here, all of our administrators, from all of the teachers, all of the staff that works with our students each and every day. We have much to be proud of. The town has much to be thankful for. And we certainly have more work in front of us. But we will not ease up and we will not take it easy until we are satisfied that we are doing everything possible to improve what our students know so that when they graduate from us, they are ready to be successful in a very rapidly changing, complex world. So with that, I wanted to let the committee know and the folks at home know that that's an overview, a snapshot of where we are. I know that the committee has some specific questions. I think that the administrators certainly can answer them for you. But again, I want to say thank you to the parents who support the students that we are able to work with. And we will continue to work with all of our students and give them the very best we can. Thank you very much, Mr. Coonan.
Thank you, Mr. Himmelberger. I'll open up to committee members, questions. Mrs. Ennis.
If I could ask, thank you, Mr. Himmelberger, for this report. If I could ask possibly Mrs. Hackett and Mr. Milner, what changed in grade five to make such a dramatic percentage decrease in some areas and increase in others? And I'm curious as to know, can we find out how this class, this particular grade did for three and four? To see, it's quite a dive, it seems like. If you have, if you're looking at 2009, 10, and 11, pretty steady percentage-wise. And then it just kind of plummeted. I mean, it...
Yep. If I may, Mrs. Ennis, through the chair. And I don't want to step on anyone's toes. But I do want to say that in some instances, the educator evaluation system will improve these scores. Because where we have teachers who are not effective, we will improve them. And this...
Is that what happened here? You had ineffective...
I'm going to say that we have, in some cases, and I'm not going to be specific, I will not be specific. In some cases, we have some staff that we need to do a better job of giving them the tools to be better. And that's what the educator evaluation system is all about. And certainly, anyone in education in Massachusetts today knows that that is a huge political, economic, financial linchpin. And we can see it being played out when you have, across the country, when you have other states talking about confrontation with unions. And we have fortunately steered clear in this state due to the cooperation of Mass Teachers Association and various groups so that everybody understands that we're working together to improve. But I would say that that is certainly a contributing factor. It's not always cause and effect when you go through these reports. But it is something that we are very serious about improving. And it is something that nobody wants anymore to be a party to not improving. And that goes for superintendents as well as teachers, as well as nurses, as well as directors, as well as teachers who teach core curriculum and teachers who teach non-core curriculum. You know, I think that that is something that everybody wants. And due to where this state is, I think we are in the right path, in the right direction. Sorry.
Can I continue?
Start before, ma'am, yes.
Is there any way that we could take this information out of these graphs and go by class? Like you see the grade A class now are freshmen. Is there any way we can break it down by class and watch them pace it through the years? I'd be interested to see how third graders are doing now and then be able to watch that progression. If there's a way we can do that and compare them with our MAP testing, when you do our MAP testing?
We have that capability, Mrs. Ennis. And certainly, the beauty of the MAP testing is that it is designed to mirror the MCAS in proficiency and standards. So it gives us a terrific barometer as to how our students are doing throughout the year. But yes, we can, we have the data now that we can customize to be able to do that.
And the only other thing I'm going to ask for, something I think I ask for it every year, is I'm very interested in seeing a student who does very well in class with their classwork and can be an AB student, yet when they take their MCAS... So I'm very interested in seeing how that, those numbers look, if that can be pulled out also. Because I think that's telling of the MCAS. And everyone knows how I feel about the MCAS. For me, it's a waste of time and money. I don't think it does anything to educate our kids. I'm all for accountability, absolutely. But this is not, teaching to test is not a way to educate children. But anyways, besides my little political banter, I'm just curious if we could take a look. We don't have to go through all the grades. Maybe you could pick and choose two or three, where it's very affected. It seems like their classwork is terrific. The teachers say they're hard workers. Yet as soon as they test, they're ineffective. So I'd like to see if we could see some of those numbers. That would be helpful. If you can pull them from this information, you know, if it's possible, I'd appreciate that too. Thank you, sir.
Sure. Thank you. Next.
Just a general point. In looking at the math and the ELA scores, we've heard a lot about ELA and what we've done for ELA, the push in the elementary schools, the new John Collins program. But what have we done in math? We don't see the scores moving as much in math at all. I guess it's good, it hasn't gone down. But I don't see the movement there.
I think I would certainly defer to some of the administrators. However, we all know there are a lot more words in a math problem than there are numbers. And a big piece of improving math is to get students comfortable with the verbiage and the definitions of what they're running across so that they can take a math problem that's really a word problem and be able to then line it up as a calculation in order to get the answer. And I think that, you know, that is something that will come, albeit a little bit slower. But it's something I know that we are working on doing because on all math MCAS tests, the number of words, the number of definitions that students need to master is significant. And so it's not simply being able to recall a calculation. It's being able to reason through and critically analyze a word problem and be able to come up with an answer. So, you know, we certainly have, I know that up at Clara Barton, Mr. Baroni has done a lot with the grade three and four in teaming some of the teachers and the students. I know at the middle school, we have emphasized math assessments as a way to get more students exposed and with STEM, our science, technology, engineering, and math course. But it is a battle, no doubt. And I'm not sure if any of the individual administrators want to come to my rescue. I hope I didn't totally botch your answer there, Mrs. Ravelli.
Mr. Baroni.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us here tonight. I just wanted to speak to your question. I also wanted to piggyback on what Mr. Himmelberger was saying about, you know, improving the ELA scores will have a direct impact on math scores. Research shows that. So I know our focus and our thrust this year is on ELA, but it doesn't mean that we have forgotten about math. Just some of the things that we're doing at my school, which I think have contributed to some of the growth that you see at our school. We started, two years ago, we started flexible math groups within our school. We did that on a somewhat part-time basis the first year. And after the first year, we saw a lot of improvements. We saw a big push from the students in terms of beginning to enjoy math a little bit more. Had a lot of parents that began to rally around the program as well. So the second year, we went across-the-board in both grades three and four with the flexible math groupings. We continue to do that this year, which I think, again, has had some impact on the increase that you see at the grade three and four level. We also have a, we started focusing on vocabulary within math at both grades three and four. We established last year common vocabulary within the grades that students will be responsible to know throughout the course of the year. Teachers focus on those words. We have word scrambles on a daily basis over the intercom contests, if you will. And then we had a big pep rally right before the MCAS where we asked all, we gave all students a word, and then they dressed up as that word and celebrated that word. We did that with the big parade. We continue with the help of Title I. We continue to have morning math each morning, well, three mornings during the week, which last year, we saw a big increase in enrollment. And we also offered a math program at the end of the day, one day a week on Mondays, for students that are in Title I, to support those students that were in need of a little bit of help. We've had some John Collins professional development to increase and improve writing in math, which has been a great help. We also instituted another initiative two years ago where we now have common grade-level math work for morning work every morning. And that work is to focus on the basic skill reinforcement in both grades three and four. So every week or every day, students come in. They have 15, 20 minutes of both ELA and math work. Every student in grade three has the same, every student in grade four. And again, it just focuses on reinforcing the basic facts because that's where we saw the need based on previous MCAS scores, just the reinforcement of the basic facts. We've also increased time on learning in math from between an hour to an hour and 15 minutes, depending on teacher's schedules. But most of the teachers are working toward about an hour and 15 minutes each day on math. And I think the addition of the lead teachers this year will certainly improve, it will improve the collaboration within the grade levels, ultimately resulting in positive student outcomes in math and ELA. So those are some of the things we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All set? It's good? Thank you. Okay, I just have a couple of points as well going through this. And I think committee members, and Mr. Baroni touched on a lot of them. Looking through this analysis, and particularly at the math scores, I've come up with a question. And part of it, just dealing with my own children, is I have a fifth grader, a seventh grader, and one didn't do so well in her MCAS and one did outstanding. And the question posed, and my older one said, "Well, it's finally made sense that." And my other one said, "Well, I just didn't really understand that. I didn't get it." And part of the, where I'm going with this is, does anything have to do with the MCAS scores, the correlation with everyday math? Where isn't there, is there a switch off partially through the curriculum when you go from everyday math to back to the old-fashioned math? And again, as a parent that works with my child and his homework sometimes, and he said, "No, Dad, we don't do it like that anymore." That, you know, that I think the first and fifth grade, I had to go to a parent university to find out how to help my child with the math. So, and again, we don't have the answer tonight, but Mr. Himmelberger, I'd request a report with some type of correlation with the everyday math and how that, A, impacts our MCAS scores. And as you look at the state average, where are all communities or some sort of comparison, those schools and communities that put less emphasis on everyday math? And I'm not one up saying get rid of everyday math, but for me as a parent and now as a school committee member, really take a long look at why is there a change in the way things in math are done? I know someone said it was supposed to be a great concept. And is there research out there to show if the everyday math actually works? Or is it confusing children? Where you take a child, this is how you do it. And if the child hasn't mastered that skill, and now we're going to change it, is there confusion that happens in there that later affects that? So if we could work on some sort of report for that. And if you look at the scores, where, yes, grade four this year has improved. In the years past, it was down. And you made great strides by the extra steps for that. And I'm looking at the CPI. And for years, fifth grade were below average. And also in sixth, seventh, and eighth, we start creeping above that CPI. So that's really my analysis from looking at this and the questions that came up. And secondly, obviously, we had a bit of a drop-off at the high school. And I'm hoping that with some of the, and the studies will show, when discipline is up, then test scores go up. And hopefully, with some of the positive steps that we made last spring, that I'm hoping that we see positive results in the MCAS scores. And finally, on the same point, is we have 3% ELA and 14% math that have to the MCAS retakes. Are those students undergoing remediation techniques to get them to pass that test?
Yes, they are, actually. We had a program, Mr. Nujer wrote a grant last summer. So we had a ramp-up program, not only last summer, but we bring someone in that pulls students from their academic labs that have failed or have fallen to failing or needs improvement category. We work one-on-one to try to help them. So we extrapolate where the weaknesses are from the tests themselves. And then we try to ramp them up with a one-on-one situation.
Wonderful. Thank you. Again, thank you for coming in tonight. Board members, anything else we hear? Anyone from the administrators here to say any words in closings? No, I thank you for coming in. And I encourage you and your staffs on your incredible amounts of work that to really take this to heart because this is part of our district's report card. We'll look at the MCAS. All right? And we're just about at, as Mr. Himmelberger called, the benchmark. Our next step is how do we get above that? Put our public schools back on the forefront of education. Wonderful. Thank you, and your all excuses. All right, as we transition, our next item on the agenda was a request of a parent, Mr. Richard Fortier. And this parent had requested to discuss a couple of, three items, and particularly the district electronic device policy, the middle school suspension policy, and the homeschooling policy. Mr. Fortier here.
Yes.
Sir? Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And we're kind of new to the town. We've only been here four years. I guess we're not transients, but we are new. We were 25 years in our previous community. And there's been something that's been bothering me and weighing kind of heavy on me since we've been here. And some communities embrace technology. Some communities, you know, put technology into children's hands. And in our middle school, when you read the school policy, they're confiscated at the beginning of the day and are returned to a parent at the end of the day if they're seen on the children. So if a child has a laptop or an iPod or an iPad or a smartphone, you know, Oxford confiscates that and does not allow the student to use it. And I would like the electronic device policy to be changed to say that if in the eyes of the teacher, that device is inhibiting or affecting the education process in the school, that the teacher could take that away from the student and then give it back to them at the end of that class because they may be going to another class that would use technology. So I would just like, you know, if you look at our MCAS scores in the middle school, technology we're lacking. I think the number was in the 40% that needs improvement. So we need to be able to put technology in our children's hands also. So that's been kind of weighing on my mind since we've been here in the community. And I'd like to get the school committee's, you know, opinion on should that policy be modified to try to help our students make progress in this changing world that we live in now.
Okay, thank you. Basically, my opinion on this, and there's two, the school committee operates in two separate venues, is that we are a policy committee. And you're talking about instituting a policy. And then the second part of that is the administrators run their building. Particularly with this one, what our current, how our current status is, we have, in every spring, the administrators come to us with their school handbook. And the principal and their staff, their leadership team at the schools, they designate the policy. It's particularly on electronic devices that best suits... It's particularly on electronic devices that best suits their needs.
Right.
Best suits the needs of the school. So we're talking about taking away from the administrators and talking about, I'm just taking notes here, sir, as we go along, a district-wide policy. Okay? Where this goes, and tonight as a committee that, this, this will be sent to subcommittee. And the subcommittee will talk about it, and they'll choose where they want to go with that, if they want, actually want to come forth with a district-wide policy, or do we, or do we want to leave us status quo? And then they'll come up in there if the policy does come back, or this, this will come back in front of the agenda again, when the, when the subcommittee will look at it, and they'll give their recommendation, what they want to do with it.
Right. Would you be taking comments from the community, from parents?
Anyone's welcome to, anyone's welcome to email me, any board member, the superintendent, even to your own principal on that, on what their, what their take is on that, and then they'll be forwarded to us. The subcommittee will meet, and you'll be informed when, when we do come back with that.
Right.
Okay? Okay? So that one's the first one, that's, we're talking about, you're trying to bring the educational aspect of why bring a smartphone or iPad, iPod to school?
Right.
And the consequences if they are caught with it, maybe getting back. Now, tonight we're talking about MCAS, and I'm just gonna play devil's advocate for a second, and I'm not gonna, no, you realize that if you show up and your phone goes off during MCAS, you, you fail the test. Your test is taken away from you, things like that. And I think, and I'm not gonna speak for the administrators, and part of the subcommittee's luck is they'll go out and talk to administrators. Where do they stand with it? And where it, where it goes from subcommittee is, I, I can't tell you right now. But thank you for that.
Okay, then the second item?
Yep.
The second item is also the, that's concerning to us a little bit. We've noticed in the middle school that when students have difficulty and they need to be dismissed in the day for a discipline issue, that sometimes they're, you know, they walk home. And if a student is on a regular bus, you know, coming to school, it kind of puts parents in a very bad position if both parents are working or not at home. And the administration says they have to dismiss a student because of a discipline issue, that the student is forced to walk home. And, you know, I just want to know what the school policy is about making middle schoolers that, you know, go from, you know, nine years old up to fourteen years old, you know, there's a big spread there. And, you know, in other communities that we've been in, or in other community, they did not do that. If a student was on the bus and they had a discipline issue that they needed to be dismissed, they were kept at school and then sent home on the bus at the end of the day. Because, you know, some parents work out of state, or it just, it's a difficult situation. And I just wanted to know what the school committee's opinion was in there, because I feel, feel that dismissing a middle schooler in the middle of the day, to walk home on a busy street is really putting a child at risk. And if the parents are at work, the child is potentially going to a home that's locked or unsupervised.
Okay, again, currently, there's no school committee policy on that.
Yeah, I looked through the school, through the handbook, and there's nothing on it.
That, that, that there is busing and is a school administration, it's currently a school administrative issue. So again, that will be sent out to the policy committee as well, and we'll, we'll examine it, and again, talk to. And you're talking particularly to the middle school?
I was talking particularly to the middle school.
Particularly at the middle school. Because I, I can tell you now, at the high school level, I don't know, Mr. Wells, is I, I work at a high school, and if it's disruptive, you're gone.
Right.
Absolutely gone.
And there's a difference between a high schooler and a middle schooler, and that's the reason I brought that up. Because, you know, we can understand that a high schooler, you know, has a little bit more control. And they have a little bit more ability to take care of themselves and the community also. You know, but my concern was the middle schooler does not have the same filters and the same ability to take, to take care and protect themselves, especially if they go into a, a home that may be locked or unsupervised.
Thank you. And that's gonna be sent to policy committee, and your third one, sir?
And the third one was, we've made a decision to homeschool this year, and it seemed like it was very inconsistent in the homeschooling approval process. And again, I looked through the policy book, I looked through some stuff on the webs, and I didn't really find anything that helped us to understand how that process was supposed to work.
In turn, okay, I know that there's, in our policy, there's an application, there's a overview. And excuse me, I'm just gonna just reference the policy, try and get the specific while you're in front of us. It's on page eighty-two to eighty-five. Okay. What part, what part of that did you find confusing, sir?
Well, when we made application in the springtime to do homeschooling right at the end of the, the process of, you know, the spring school year, I should say. And presented material to be reviewed, that the work that my daughter had done, the material was not even reviewed, and we were just turned down. And I found that kind of surprising. And then when we applied this fall, we applied with even less information because I was so upset, and it was approved. So I was a little bit confused. I don't want to talk about the individual student.
No, no, just go back to what happened last, yeah, not, not with the individuals doing, just the process.
Right.
Last year.
Right, we made application.
Okay.
And then we brought what was called the portfolio information to be reviewed, and it was not even reviewed. We were just turned down. And went, and an offer to go to summer school for my daughter, which was not acceptable. And then we made application again this fall, and the application was approved. We didn't provide the portfolio, we provided less information this fall. So it was very inconsistent, that was my, my concern. And if, if we ran into difficulties, I don't want other families to run into difficulties also.
Okay, when, last, this fall, I can understand the fall, because it's based upon, for a time, for a period of time, when was the application sent last?
I don't have that information in front of me right now, but we could probably take that offline and look at it in another place.
Yeah, yeah, I, I can look at it, I'm just curious, is that you, you made it partially through the school year, the beginning, end of?
Daughter went through three quarters of the school year, and then we made a decision at the very end of the school year, the last two months, to homeschooler, made an application. Continued to work, and then provided a portfolio, and then were turned down.
Okay, so you're looking for a, a consistency in it, but also, okay, I, I can follow.
Yeah, and, and, you know, and I was just, you know, I just don't want other families to go through the same.
Understandable.
It didn't, didn't make sense.
Understandable.
Yep.
Okay. Again, and that's, and that will go again, policy review, that there is a current policy, and we're looking to amend that policy. Well, the look at is consistency in terms of timeline, something in there?
Right. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, thank you for coming in. So when the policy review committee meets, they do a.
All right.
Correspondence, sir? North school correspondence, okay. And information, and subcommittees, you know, a student representative left. And he's home studying, Zach, if you're watching, keep the books cracked. Superintendent, report the ceilings.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coonan. Just wanted to let everyone know officially, I'm sure most people do know by now, that at the middle school and the high school, last Friday, we conducted training with, as regards to our safety and security of our building. And we had K-nine units in the buildings. We did a full lockdown at the high school. And I'm very pleased to report that administration in both buildings did an outstanding job of coordinating and of working with law enforcement. And no contraband, no paraphernalia was found in the two buildings. And so I wanted to let folks know that while it was done on a random basis, districts do it from time to time. I think it's important to be proactive and to work with our local and state police to provide the opportunity for the trainings and to make sure that we do everything we can to keep our schools safe and drug free. And so, again, my thanks to the administration in both the middle school and the high school, and to the Oxford Police Department for outstanding cooperation. And a terrific outcome, we are happy about. Also pleased to report, along with the, the anti-bullying awareness that is, is going on across this state and across the country, that we have a middle school student, Julianne Welsh, who will represent Oxford, and Oxford Middle School, at the state gathering to preview a documentary called Bullying. And also after that, the representatives, there's one from each city and town across the Commonwealth, will then get an opportunity to meet at the State House and talk to the governor and, and many other important people about what they see in their communities and, and offer ways to continue the awareness that all of us need to have regarding bullying. And so congratulations to Julianne Welsh. Indeed, an honor to be picked, and look forward to hearing back. This is the third year the governor has done this, I believe, around his Project Three Fifty-One, where every, every city in town gets to send a representative. And the, the students come back full of ideas, they are true ambassadors back to the towns, and offer some, some incredible insight into the activities of the day. Also, I want to invite anyone who cares to have supper with the superintendent next Monday, October twenty-second, at the Chaffee School. We will be providing, I guess I could say, free food. And a chance to meet with, with me, to hear about what we are doing in the district, what national policy and initiatives are coming at us. And also, I understand that perhaps a member or two of the school committee may attend as well. And so this is at six o'clock next Monday at the Chaffee School, and we'll go until about seven thirty, or until the food is gone. And I think it's a great opportunity to meet with Mr. Yvonne, myself, members of the committee. The only thing we ask is that, we did send home invitations, but we ask folks to please either return their invitation and/or call the Chaffee School to let us know in a proximate count as we prepare for supper with the superintendent. I think, you know, it's something that the committee has, has talked about. I think Mrs. Ennis has certainly, and I have chatted about doing this as an opportunity to reach out to parents who may not always have the opportunity to meet in a relaxed setting and to learn more about the schools, the district, and what is, what we see as, as happening across the state and the country in terms of public education. A chance to ask questions as well. And I look forward to, hopefully, taking this on the road to additional schools as well. But again, we urge folks to please contact the school or send back their reservation slips so we can get an idea of how many people will be joining us. Also, Monday, November fifth, which is coming up quickly, there is no school that day, as that's parent-teacher conferences. And also Tuesday, November sixth, is no school due to, hopefully, a high turnout for the national elections. I'm sure most, everyone is looking forward to that day, almost as much as the politicians themselves. So no school on Monday, the fifth, there will be parent-teacher conferences. And we'll have those dates and times up on the website as well. No school on Tuesday, November sixth, and also no school on Monday, November twelfth, as we celebrate Veterans Day. Since it falls on a Sunday, in Massachusetts, the date is celebrated the following day. And that is the, the no school announcements. None weather-related, that's good. The last, I wanted to just give a, a quick update regarding the middle school project. And happy to report that the, our new roof is, is still working fine, and hopefully for the next twenty-five or thirty years. We did get a, a nice roof out of the first phase of this project. Currently, we are looking at the, the timeline and the calendar for what needs to be done in advance of the remainder of the work that will be done next summer. And we do have one small stumbling block, and that is because under Mass General Laws and Code of Mass Regulations, if an improvement to a building exceeds thirty percent of its assessed value, then the Architectural Access Board and American Disability Act comes into play. And it's an opportunity for the building to be updated for anyone with, with disabilities. And obviously, on buildings that are forty-four years and counting, there's plenty of updating to do. The, the caveat is that both the Architectural Access Board knows that it's an, an opportunity to get some things done to improve the accessibility throughout the building for, for anyone with disabilities, but it also limits the scope of the project. And, and obviously, if, if the, the requirements that are given to the project from the state exceed that threshold, then it will shut the project down, and then nothing gets done. So there is a bit of negotiations that will take place at hearings with the state's AAB. We are confident, I should say, I am confident, that we will be able to come to middle ground to show the state that we are a community that values promoting and integrating everybody. So that students and staff, parents, community feel comfortable in all of our school environments. And so we look forward to that next step in the process so that we can continue with the balance of this project, which is to replace the exterior windows and doors and to update the, the ventilating system in that building, which it desperately needs. So that will be part science, part art, and will happen over the next couple of months. But we will continue to move that project forward with construction document, construction documents and the design phase of the project so that we can bid it. As, as the town, and as we found out, windows alone are, are subject to an incredible lead time. And so we want to make sure that we don't lose, ready? The window of opportunity, I'm sorry. I was waiting all day for that, so, so that we can get this project completed and the town gets a building that really functions well for the next generation of students. So that is our goal. I, I think that we have terrific professionals that we are working with, in, in an architect and a project manager, that are well-versed with MSBA and all of the pitfalls that, that do come up. And so I will, I look forward to continuing to update the committee and the community as we move forward. And that, oh, and just one more thing. On the twenty-ninth, I will look forward to explaining the evaluation of the superintendent to the committee. Because that is another piece of the educator evaluation system. And that will be interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for superintendent? My business manager.
I actually have nothing this evening.
Very good, thank you, sir.
He gave me all the time.
And school committee members, Mr. Riley?
Oh, sure. Let's see, the, the only thing that I have at this point in time, really, was to just thank Mr. Fortier for coming this evening. I think this makes the second parent that has appeared before us in, in the past two years since I've been here. And I would encourage parents to come and speak their minds and, and start some communication instead of, well, let's just say, start some communication. I look forward to hearing from you, actually, regarding other, you know, any input that you have about the electronics policy. It's something that I, I hold dear and, and feel that there are, there are, there should be some legal room. And so that, I, I look forward to hearing some of your suggestions, and anybody else who might have some suggestions regarding that electronics policy. I have nothing else this eve- oh, no, wait a minute, I do have one other thing. The next time that we meet, just as a reminder, we'll be listening and hearing from the high school, from Mr. Wells. Hello there. I'm looking forward, really, to hearing how things have changed over there. And, and really looking also for some, some numbers. You know, are, are we, are we seeing things like, are we seeing kids coming to school on time? Has the discipline, if it has improved, which I hear it has, things, things are really wonderful in your building. But just something that shows me that, yes, it has. But just something that shows me that, yes, it has. Something black and white. Okay? So look forward to seeing that.
Good point.
And that's it, I think.
Two good points, thank you. Mrs. Walker?
I don't have any questions because I received so much information. But I really do appreciate it because it helps me to stay on the beam because there is a lot going on, not only locally but statewide. And I'm very proud to see the results of the tests. Very good.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Mrs. Ennis?
Okey-dokey. Let's see here. Superintendent evaluation, I would like to ask you, Mr. Chairman, to please inquire through the MAS-C for the training program that they have for school committees so that I've looked at the document and I saw it last year's conference, it's extensive. It is, it's a, seriously, it's a good month, if not longer, amount of work for school committee members to evaluate the superintendent. Something I've never thought I'd have to do like that. It's unbelievable. It is unbelievable document. It is, I don't know. I can't say anymore about it. I just can't because you have to see it to believe it. Anyways, that's one thing. I'd like to know if we could have, Mr. Chairman, through you two, the superintendent and business manager, if we could take a look at the maintenance that's necessary around all of our schools, the four buildings, so that if there's anything needed to come up for May Town meeting, we can maybe have it on a list or if we have to wait. I think of this building first, of course, because this is the building I'm around all the time now. If there's going to be any work on any of the brick outside, if, where our entrances are to this building, the peeling that's going on, and whatever else, I've seen some plates missing where there's some drainage, few things like that, you know, it's just my eye goes to it. So if we could just maybe have, I don't know if Mr. Donave would do that for us or how that would be handled, but if we could have a breakdown of what all the buildings are in need of, if we could have that, you know, in the next, maybe before the holidays if possible, or sooner?
Before the holidays, yes.
Or sooner. I understand that Danielle Morrow has become part now of the Oxford Public Schools and I have to say, I was on a committee with Danielle when I first came on. And we are truly, truly blessed to have Danielle as a preschool educator and coordinator in this district. She knows her stuff and I actually bumped into her and she was very excited for the dinners with the superintendent. She thought that was a great idea to get that going and hopefully we'll even bring in some preschool parents and get them kind of, you know, on the road to what we need to do. I think that's all I have. Great news on the lockdown. That was very impressive, I thought. And, let's see, that's all I have. And I hope people do come to the dinner and, you know, talk to your superintendent, meet your superintendent, hear what maybe a few committee members have to say. I think that it's important for parents to understand that they are the change education needs. It comes from them, doesn't come from us. It starts there because the first teacher is the parent. So, my opinion. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. The only thing I have tonight, and it just came out of discussion, Mr. Hemburgh is, one part of his opening remarks, he made reference to the transient-type population, I called the mobility rate. Could you get the committee a report of what that mobility rate is, especially as we start getting to budget and we start assessing needs that we will need for this budget in dealing with that transient-type population? That the mobility rate is part of the, student may go here, to here, to here, to here, and at the end of the day, they show up Oxford Public Schools and yes, we welcome aboard and your child, and we will educate them the best that we can, but we've got to, we've got to have the tool, the best tools available to get them to close the gaps that may have happened. And so if we can take a look at that mobility rate and give the committee a report, just one pager on that and what it means.
Can do.
Thank you. Okay. Let's see, at this stage, and our next meeting again will be October 29th and we will welcome back Mr. Nugent and Mr. Wells on there and they have their marching orders from Mrs. Ravelli, what should be looking for? Yes. At this point, I'll open the floor. Questions and comments from the floor? Close the floor? And executive session, no, sir?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we are closed. Anything, thank you. Thank you, administrators coming in. And again, thank you, Mr. Forty, for coming.